Good evening. I'd like to call the board of selectmen's meeting to order at 6:04 PM, June 22, 2020. If you please all stand to pledge allegiance. Mr. Wedgley could you lead us tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. While we go on to the agenda, just need until further notice to keep our members and staff safe and to comply with our S.A. 1-1, the state emergency governance orders restrictions on public gatherings, Town of Alton is moving from the in-person meeting to a remote participation meeting. To remotely attend the meeting oddly only, visit our website, www.alton.nh.gov. For telephone access and remote access instructions listed under news announcements on the homepage or telephone the Selectmen's Office, (603) 875-2113, or (603) 875-0229, between 8:00 a.m. and 4:30 p.m., with a dialing code and meeting ID for each selectmen's meeting. There continues to be no public input at this time. If you wish to have something read into the record, please call the Selectmen's Office,[99.71][99.74](603) 875-2113, or (603) 875-0229, or email the Selectmen at selectmen@alton.nh.gov, or mail a letter to the Board of Selectmen at P.O. Block 659, Alton, New Hampshire, 03809. Your comments, questions, and concerns will be read at the next available meeting and answered at the meeting or the next available meeting. This time, gentlemen, I'd like to have an approval of the agenda as submitted. So moved, Mr. Chairman. It's been by Mr. Holt to approve the agenda as submitted.
I'll audition.
Second.
Anybody that wants to audition can put it in. I'm seeing none discussion. I'll pull the board. Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth, yes, and vote as affirmative. At this time, I'll step back and I'll let the police chief, Ryan Heath, talk to us about the emergency update and plans for possibly a soft opening here in the near future. Chief.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, like always, I'd like to thank the community and the board members as well for their continued support and understanding as we work through the pandemic. Right now, as most of you know, the state's beginning to open up. Most of the businesses have opened. The remaining businesses are due to open in some level or form by the end of next week. So the one thing I'd like to remind everybody is with this tiered opening, even though a lot of areas are opening up, the businesses are opening up, there still are restrictions set on just about every business as to, one, the universal protocols that they need to utilize, and also for a lot of places like restaurants and other gathering areas, they're still limiting the amount of access. Some of them are, you know, half-capacity. It's all set by the state and CDC guidelines right now. So we are still, the state is still moving along. It's moving along progressively, but at a measured response. And to that end, the Town of Alton and the emergency management team, we're trying to stay along the same guidelines as the state, sort of mimic in our response to, you know, the pandemic and take a measured response as we start to reopen up the town and the community. So right now, we'll be set right now for a timeline, a tentative timeline, is we're looking for a tiered opening for the town buildings on July 1st. The reason, you know, some of the reasons, just to give a little background for the board, but also the community that's listening in, as to why, you know, we have a timeline out there, is there's a lot of preparations that we need to make for our employees and also for the public to keep them safe. We need to get some barrier windows, even temporary ones, in place. We need to structure the movement and the flow through the town hall so that we have the proper social distancing throughout the hallways in front of the different areas and windows where the public will come in. We're just trying to establish that and set those protocols up, make sure that we have that down, not only as a protocol, but also to make sure all the employees know what's going on and they're informed as well and have some sort of input. We did put out requests to all the department heads for them to look at their areas of responsibilities, talk with their employees, and get back to us by the end of the week with some feedback, too, as to whether or not they have some additional areas that we hadn't thought of or hadn't, we hadn't maybe addressed that they would like us to address or provide some sort of protective measure in that area. So by July 1st, what we're looking at is opening up the town buildings, like you said, allowing the public in. The public will come in in a directed form, making sure that we maintain the social distancing, the universal protocols. You know, employees will have proper PPE, we'll get separation dividers for everybody that's dealing with the public, and also do, continue to do some of our business as we can, either remotely or at a distance through telephone. I mean, some of the business that they are conducting can remain remote, and if they can do that, you know, obviously they're encouraged to continue to do that for people that can and have the means to do it that way. For all the other individuals who need to conduct business or need to come into town hall and get some long overdue business taken care of, they'll be able to do that.
I saw dog licenses.
What's that?
I saw dog licenses.
There you go. So that'll be the first step that we're looking at right now. The next step, and I know that people are anxiously waiting, is the status with meetings and opening the meetings up to the public and going on. We are going to be looking at that. It's not going to happen on July 1st, and the reason why is because we have so much that we're focusing on with the town buildings to get them open because we thought, we felt and we still feel that that's the priority right now. That should be the first thing that opens up for the public because right now, meetings are functioning remotely and functioning the way that we're doing it. So there is a way that we can keep business going. Right now, there's nothing happening in the town hall. There's nothing happening in the town buildings. So that was our first and foremost focus of attention, was to get all of the needs and things taken care of that we needed. As you can, part of the problem or part of the things that we were supposed to, that we were trying to weigh out is the supplies that we would need for anything like this. You know, obviously, there's a little delay in getting some of those things. So we needed to start working on this sooner than later, getting stuff in. And I think we have a good plan, and I think we're going to be able to make that timeline. You know, we discussed some more today on some options, and you actually will see some quotes come in for some different things that we'll talk about later on in this meeting as well. But I think we have a good plan and an obtainable plan, which is most important. I mean, we could set timelines, you know, out. It's a matter of whether we can meet those timelines, and I think we've established that we will be able to meet that timeline, and we're pushing hard for that July 1 opening. So we'll continue to push to that direction. Again, I would just like to remind, you know, the community out there that we still, we still are in this sense of, you know, a pandemic. We still have, there is still a concern out there. Life needs to go on. We need to move forward. We need to advance, but we also need to be concerned about making sure that we still protect ourselves and protect our employees. PPE, the separation dividers, those are all still recommended guidelines. Social distancing is still a practice that we need to maintain. And again, that's something that's going to come into big play when we start talking about opening up the meetings. Right now, if a meeting opens up to the public, we still need to establish exactly six feet apart throughout the audience and how many people we can fit in the audience, and that all has to be designated ahead of time. We can't do that based on waiting until a crowd shows up and then determine what we have for space, available space, where seating should be. Everything has to be sort of measured out ahead of time, and I think if any of you have seen the restaurants right now, and what they've had to do is to get their tables spread out, to make sure that they have the proper social distancing, it's similar to that in that nature, that all of our meeting rooms have to be set up and established that way before we start opening up for meetings, and that will be the next area that we will be tackling as soon as we get the buildings under control and things moving along. So that will be shortly here to follow. In the meantime, we will continue doing meetings the way that we've been doing them remotely. It's still planned on having the regular meetings and any additional meetings that are brought forward or proposed. The, other than that, I mean, that's really the direction that we're heading and what most people can expect in the near future here. But I would like to entertain any questions that you folks have or anything that I can answer for you.
Chief, I imagine the emergency team is going to be in existence for quite some time, right?
Yes, I mean, as long as this is, you know, categorized as a declared emergency for the state, we will be in effect, and we will continue to meet. We will be continuing to address any needs, things, or issues that pop up. You know, there's some other things that we're sort of contending with now, aside from the pandemic right now. Recently, you know, emergency management, we have three other areas of contention right now. We have the pandemic. Recently, now we have drought warnings because of all the hot weather we've gotten. We haven't gotten any water, so there's some concerns of wells going dry, lack of water in certain areas and some public water systems. The other issue that was put out as a concern right now is the extreme temperature, especially with the elderly. We're dealing with the pandemic and the fear of the elderly getting sick, but then you add the extreme temperatures on top of it, it kind of magnifies the situation as well. And then the other issue that we're constantly monitoring right now, too, is also the issue of protests right now and what's going on nationally with, you know, some of the law enforcement matters and protest issues.
Yeah, we had, what, we had one in front of the town hall the other day.
Yes.
One person protest.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
The other thing that you guys start thinking about, too, is September, we have voting, September, November.
Yes.
Work on figuring that, we can do that safely.
Sure, absolutely. Definitely going to be a big contention, and, you know, a lot of that's going to have to be, you know, we'll have to set that up, too, so we have a flow in, a flow out, and we're going to have to maintain that with personnel to.
Dr. Robin today told me.
Bay Park. Fill them in one way.
I think I said to have it right in the back lawn, five, six of us across the back lawn and drive up to him.
Well, let them vote and put it in the box hall.
I'm making shooting practices.
I'll say that, I'd say that nothing's off the table as far as venue goes. We will be considering everything and figuring out every way.
That's great, Rob.
No, it is. And various here as far as the deadlines and timeline goes.
I don't think that is what we do. We're going to be wrong when we're voting anyway, so it's.
I mean, because it ain't going to be just us changing the way people vote.
Right, right, yeah, absolutely.
I think personally it can be safely done where we usually have the polls, you know, or maybe we could have an option. You could come inside or you could be outside. I mean, you know.
Right.
I think it's doable because it's like, we definitely have a steady flow running through the polls during the course of the day, but it's never anything that can't be controlled, I don't think.
No, you got to remember when the presidential election, we get over 60%.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. And that's the real busy one that.
Yeah, but I do think is the way things are set up and typically the way it works, I think you're right. I think as long as we have it, we have it planned ahead of time and have things channeled. So that's not just an open door, come in, do your thing. We have a channel. And for the most part, for voting, we usually do have people set up in a rotation so they're in and they're out, but we just have to keep the spacing between people, and I think it's doable.
I would say having them come in one way and exiting out through the other door and walking around.
Right.
Well, that's right. I'm saying that now, just for you to get in touch with Robin and make sure we have a safe way to set it up.
And quite frankly, I think the public will go along with it.
Oh, absolutely. I think so, too. I think this has gone on long enough that people, you know, have, I mean, the initial shock is over and people aren't coming into grips with the fact that, you know, as a community, we have to take these measures to protect everybody. So we've gotten a lot of support through the community, and I'm very thankful for that. People have been very understanding in our area, so. But to that end, just one thing I forgot to mention, an additional thing that I wanted to put out was for the public to remember that though we're opening back up the 10, the groups larger than the 10 has been lifted, but what's planned gatherings over 50, that's still in effect, and it's something to remember because, you know, we still have to take those precautions that we've taken with some of our summer events, because those are planned gatherings that are well over 50 people. Some of those have been canceled already, and we've had to do that. We are working towards some later events in August, possibly, you know, a day or so of a Monday. Vanstek Committee has rescheduled to latter part of August as well. I believe there's a request from the Boat Museum for their parade as well that we talked about today. You know, some smaller events from there that can be managed, but, you know, later into August, but for right now, and we're also looking at the possibility of maybe opening up some concerts in August, in the latter part of August as well. But for right now, we still need to be cautious about that as a community, about gatherings, even outside gatherings.
Mr. Gold.
I voiced my opinion before about public meetings, selectmen's meetings, planning boards, ZDA meetings. Do we have any kind of a target date for that? Do we have any, say, maybe a couple of weeks, a couple of months?
No, I would say probably in a few weeks range. We're just looking to make sure right now, we've had, you know, we've, it's been about two and a half meetings where we've been looking at these public buildings and getting the supplies that we need and getting things to effect, and I think we've been hesitant on setting any further date for meetings right now just for opening them up because we weren't sure whether we're going to hit that July 1 target. I think after today's meeting, we're all fairly confident that we're going to make that target date, and what we'll be looking at is probably, I would say, you know, without talking to the whole group, can't hold me to, but I would say we'd be looking more towards a couple of weeks out. Right? I know nobody's looking to prolong this longer than we need to, but at the same token, we do have to, you know, consider not only how we're going to hold the meetings, but also how, what resources it's going to take to disinfect that. That's another big concern because when we're opening these town buildings, in particularly, and using the selectmen's meeting as an example, the plan right now that we've all agreed on is when we open this to the building, we're going to close off the second floor to the general public, because there's no, there's no business that needs to be done here. So we're going to close that off all day long. Welfare, anything like that can be done by appointment basis down in the high key room, and that's one of the ways that we're going to sort of contain things. But once we open up the meeting, the public meeting rooms, that means that every time there's a meeting, there's going to be public traffic in and out, and it has to be by universal precautions. We have to dedicate staff to come in and disinfect on a regular basis. So we just have to make sure that we have that, we can absorb that, that extra work and the timeline that's involved in that. So it's just a few more things than some people, you know, like in the general public. I would just like to try to, you know, educate people that, you know, there are sometimes, some people think of that, some people don't, that we're trying to cover all of our bases in doing so. But we will, we're not looking at trying to drag that out longer than necessary, for
You know, the questions for the chief.
The only thing I wanted to clarify is your extra material for Plexiglas, is that still an avenue at this discussion at the emergency meeting this afternoon to put temporaries?
Yes. What we're doing is, the only thing we're waiting on is John was going back to Granite State Glass based on the proposals that we got, because they did some of these are what they call the Plexi Shield barriers. We're involved in this, and they've been mass producing those. So we were going to check to see if those were readily available because they're mass producing them.
That's right.
And if that's the case, it may be a lot faster as far as getting things in and, you know, to just get the barriers that are already made. If they say, no, we're two, three weeks out, again, we're playing, it's a, it's a balance between cost and timing.
That's what I'm trying to clarify this afternoon. We discussed it, but I wasn't clear on the fact that, do we know if something will arrive by Friday?
Right.
If something, again, nothing is, I'd like to know, because I'm more than happy to, with Ruben, and make, take measurements. I think there's six of them to install.
Sure.
Take measurements and make them up at the shop and bring them down and put them in.
Right.
But that would have to be before Friday.
Right. And we're, we are planning on having that all ironed out tomorrow. Where John, John was making some phone calls. The other thing that we were doing was, like I said, the paperwork that I sent around with the possibilities of ordering, those would arrive by Monday. Just Monday's kind of pushing things a little bit right now. So those would arrive by Monday. The only thing we didn't know about is, like I said, Granite State Glass had presented us with this, and if they could produce something or they had something, we could just go down and pick. It was probably a better option for everybody right now based on the cost, but that was the one thing we were waiting on. And then also tomorrow, we're going to be gathering those materials that we utilize for voting, chains, walkway ropes, things like that, to guide things and start with that as well.
Right, and that I know. So if somebody could just, I don't know, if yourself let us know, and I could take a little time, wouldn't take that long, put those together as temporaries.
Sure.
Put in place.
No, for sure. I'll get your hard answer tomorrow, for sure. Just waiting to hear back from John on that.
Well, Chief, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Chief, for all the work they've been doing. I know a lot of times, a lot of us feel that it's not fast enough, especially us that are working out in the public every day versus being in town government. As in the public sector, we kind of make wheels a little faster. I want to say we all take precautions, you know, precautions in government, so we seem frustrated at times the way the openings or the soft openings are going. Have patience with us. We just look at it as a business aspect of some of us.
Done a great job.
We do not mean anything personal by it. We just want us to see if it gets faster, just like the rest of the public would like to see.
Absolutely. No, for the most part in this community, even with the boards and the community members, a lot of it's just been a discussion. It's been an open discussion, a back and forth, so we all understand what we're contending with, and, you know, I understand more what the concerns are in the public, and the public understands more of what I'm trying to weigh the safety measures out, and for all, for the most part, everything is, in the end, everybody's come to a common ground, so.
It's nice to look at that map that they keep printing and see our color so light.
There you go. Let me use a little more page.
There you go.
All right. There's nothing else for the chief. We'll move on with our meeting. He is, it does come up later on in our meeting, but he also comes up at the end of the meeting, so I'm just going to kind of overpass him right now. Know his wife and kids would love to have him home, but I'm holding my little one. There are no announcements, submission of public comments, questions, concerns. We do have a response from our attorney, but that's coming underneath Town Administrator's reports on the Water Department, so I'm going to pass over that. We have no appointments. We'll move on to new business, Water Works Department, Levy Park Water Testing. Remember, we, over a week ago at the emergency management meeting, we did discuss this. We were going to have John also come on with us tonight along with Courtney, I believe, if I remember that, have us talk about it, because the state of New Hampshire has changed the water regulations and testing and certain amounts of arsenic and different levels to a much hotter requirement that is going to be very hard for any towns to meet. At this time, you have Courtney on the phone.
Yep, I'm here. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Courtney. Be right with you.
No problem.
So I guess we only have you tonight, Courtney, and maybe John might have forgot about this, but so, as the Town of Alton Water Works, we received a violation of arsenic in Levy Park, well, as you've seen by the previous email, yes. I guess what we need to do is have you talk to us tonight about it, and also, did the public be concerned, or is it because they've changed the levels of the arsenic, they've lowered such a amount that it can be hard to almost reach this?
Well, I think you're, I think you're definitely on the right track as far as the regulations being changed, and they've played with these regulations throughout the years, and actually, we're due to lift the regulation to, back to point 0.5 sometime in 2021. But realistically, what's going on here is that all you know from the meeting on April 6th, when I requested a VFD for Levy Park due to the air situation with the well and the motor starter, but the public may not know that the well has not been running since January due to the maintenance it's undergoing. Usually, that's not a problem. We try to have every well, when it comes to its sampling time, to run it 24 hours before we collect samples. Unfortunately, due to COVID and trying to get everything set up so we can get this well running the way it should, we haven't been able to get it back online just yet. Whether it has to do with getting an electrician in or shipping length of time, it's not up running, and it's not part of our, our program right now. We were due to sample for quarter two. We are on sampling for arsenic once a year and quarter two for Levy Park, and we waited until as late as we could in June, flushed the well through the hydrant behind the pump station, but we just didn't flush it enough. This well has been anywhere from 2004 to point 001, back up to point 011. It's been all over the place, but I will say that this well has not run in line as much as Jones Field has. Actually, when I came on as a commissioner in 2016, the well hadn't run from 2013 to 2015, where we started creeping up in our arsenic levels again. I don't think there's any need for the public to panic. We are just barely over the MCL. The MCL is point 010, and we're point 019, and I'm fully confident that that is because we didn't get to run that well as long as we should. We all know that whenever a well sits, a number of things can go wrong with it, and this is just another, another situation where the well just wasn't able to run as well as it should have and flush everything out, and I think we'll be right back in the regular numbers that we were at before.
Any questions for Courtney? So Courtney, just filled with the, with the new standard measurement.
Yep.
Had it unchanged, we would be considered okay?
So the only thing that we now have, and it's kind of in our favor, it's not ideal, but when you look at it from the way I'm looking at it, it does help. When they look at your arsenic sampling, it's a running average for the year. Now, when you have an average and you step up to the plate and you strike out, you know, the first time you get up there, your average isn't that great. Same thing goes with the well sampling. We only sample once a year, so we don't really get another chance to try to bring that down. So now that we're on quarterly sampling, we'll be taking a sample every quarter at Levy Park, a more routine, realistic number of what we're doing, and it's actually going to let us know, you know, if we're starting to see any problems in a more realistic setting because we'll be doing it every quarter. If we start to see those quarterly samples creep up, we know that we might have to start looking into some, some sort of mitigation for arsenic. This way, with the point 019, we, that's the only sample we have, so we don't have anything that can help bring our average down. With the new, the new standard, I don't think, we don't have very high iron levels there at that well that we should run into a situation where we're going to be over the MCL. It has, like I said, it had a history in the past. It's always been there, but nothing in any, any limits that should be a concern, and I think once we start to get it on a regular running basis, that's never been our strong well, so it's kind of the one that gets forgotten. You know, it's 4th of July, and it's 90 degrees, and everybody's up and pressure washing everything and enjoying the outdoors. Jones Field is usually the one that we turn to run because it can keep up with the demand. But with this new VFD, I think the well's going to perform a lot better, and we're going to start being able to get that in the rotation like we were prior to the, the spring, when we, when we discovered a bunch of leaks, fixed them, and the air got introduced into the system. So it's kind of, kind of everything goes hand in hand, but I think, I think we're going to be just fine.
Courtney, another question ahead for you. Pump hadn't been running, so was the state notified that this pump had not been running, and you really did not have it online? Is there any allowance for that? So when you.
So they haven't been, so they haven't been informed that it wasn't running, per se. There's no, no reason for me to have to tell them that a well hasn't been running, but when the sample results came back, I did speak with them immediately, obviously. I don't let any of those samples just wait, especially when we're. I don't let any of those samples just wait, especially when we're pending a violation. But I did talk to them and due to the past sampling and the levels that they saw, they didn't accept it as taking another sample and that's, that's the reason. It wasn't just this one sample that prevented us from going into violation. They do get a quarterly report of all of my well runtimes and hours and, um, the highest runs for the month, um, in the quarter. So they, they could see in that quarterly report that it hadn't been running as much, but there, there was no notification that, hey, by the way, we haven't been running Jones Field. I honestly thought we were going to be up and running. But things just didn't work out with vendors not being able to come on site, electricians having different schedules, COVID, shipping thing, that just, it, it's taking longer than I had planned, unfortunately.
Gentlemen, have any other questions for Courtney? Well, hopefully what you said tonight, Courtney, and the folks that are listening will leave their concerns, anybody that might have read the report. I have all the faith and trust in the world in you. You get it down to the levels where it needs to be. Oh, I wish you well and I continue on with your mission at the water park because your folks did a wonderful job in the last. Really much notice and much. If there's nothing else, gentlemen, we're going to move on to the next part, another request from the.
We appreciate that.
EJ Prescott value added service program. Letter if you read, they say what they want to do. They want to partner with Walton Water Works as a partner to go in and watch their inventory, help them control their inventory better. So when things aren't used, it won't be overstocked. Basically kind of like what the nuts and bolts salesman does in my business. It is an added value, um, program, I think, for the water department. It has its pros and cons. Cons are you, you have, you need to stay as a customer with them. They will give you all the guarantees and do everything they say they will do. Unfortunately, that means you stay with them, you know, and hopefully we'll still be checking prices of elsewhere's if we think they get out of line. Uh, EJ Prescott has always been good with the Walton Water Works. I mean, even when I was a commissioner back in the nineties, there was a problem and we needed a hand. They were one of, they were the first company to ever show up and give us a hand. If the town of Walton was starting going over the fusion pipe, they were right there to show us how to do it. Best way, best practices to do it. So I, I can't say enough about their company. Maybe Courtney can add in more on that.
Um, yeah, basically, um, this is what we've been doing. We, we use Water Industries a lot because they're local. But unfortunately, when stuff happens at 11, 12 o'clock at night, um, they have offered to come in and get things for us from time to time, but their inventory is a little bit more, uh, limited than EJ Prescott. EJ Prescott has, um, different locations throughout the east coast. And if they don't, if they don't have something that we need, they're going to get it. And what this does, even though most times if I call them at nine o'clock at night, they run me what they have, this puts us in, in, in front of everybody else. So if someone else needs a part and we're part of the VAS program, they're going to make sure we get it in the quickest timeframe that we can. That, that goes a long way, especially when people have water off. It's never at the opportune time and we try to, try to get the water turned back on to them as quickly as possible. So sometimes when you're standing around waiting for parts, it can seem like an eternity. The other thing is, is that EJ Prescott has been our go-to for a lot of parts. They know what we regularly use. So what they're going to do is they're going to give us a, a program right on our computer that's going to give us our inventory count, which is going to help with a part of our asset management, which is what the state has been pushing. Inventory has always been tough, uh, here at the water department, just because we have so many different materials out there. We've got galvanize, we've got HDPE, we've got ductile iron, we've got everything out there. And it's hard to keep everything on the shelf that you might possibly need. They know what we use more often and they know the parts that we have that have been out in the garage since, you know, 1972 and the guys have never seen it and they don't know what it does. What they're going to do is if these parts are just kicking around, they're going to take that away from us and then they're going to credit us for what they're taking. So that makes us put our inventory to where we need it. Which when you don't have a million dollar budget, it's very helpful to have the stuff you need that you're going to use and not things kicking around that could be, um, beneficial somewhere else. On top of that, they have tons of training. They will, um, Mooney Street, we got a, a wet tap machine to do two valves for us, two insertion valves. They're going to provide 24/7, um, emergencies if we need something done quickly. And they'll come in and we can use their service truck one time for free as part of this program. So basically, the cost that it was to do, um, one tap on Mooney Street, I think it was around 2,600 bucks. That would, that would be taken care of one time. Then they also have OSHA training, a 10-hour OSHA course that would be beneficial to the guys. So it's really, it's a good benefit for us for something that we're already doing. I can't really say enough for them, just like Ruben said, they've, they've been great to us. And, you know, it's impossible to have everything you need at every given time and this just helps, uh, with that. So, uh, hopefully you guys can look at the benefits of it and see that, that, that should help us and it's going to give us a whole different level of service for the, for the customers. And they're, they're happy with what we're doing as well.
So I guess Courtney, just what I'm wondering about your letter here, if it's something that you will write up to an agreement that you have your authorization because they take it, it's more of a contract. They're looking for you to establish them as your primary vendor. Is that correct?
They, you know, we can get things locally if, if, you know, they can't get them to us. It's kind of like, uh, when you buy propane, they, they lock you in for a cost. And if it goes any higher, you're not going to pay any more for that, but you're not going to pay, you're not going to get locked in at the higher rate. We, we don't have a lot of in, inventory. I don't know, you know, when you're signing our slips, you, you must see that every time a line opens up on, on the summer line, we're running for parts, um, constantly. And, uh, that just doesn't, it, it doesn't work well. It's not efficient. I usually have one guy in an excavator and one truck torn apart with parts everywhere and I have to go run for parts four or five times a day. So this, you know, having the stuff they need right on the truck one time, we don't, I mean, once we're caught up, we don't use a lot of it, but they'll have what they need that they use more often. And it'll be at the discounted rate.
Okay, so I guess my question is, are they looking for, you sign a contract or is this more just a verbal agreement between?
No, there's a contract, um, and I, I didn't have the copy of it to send up with you guys. When I first wrote this, I honestly didn't expect to talk about it tonight. It was a, a surprise to me because I didn't know if it was seen yet. But, um, yeah, so there is a contract term and we can, we can leave, uh, anytime if it, if it doesn't work for us. The, the program's based to work for us. So I can send that up, uh, and you guys can, can look at it and make a decision after that. But I figured I'd get this, at least the program out to you and inform you of what's out there for us and the benefits of it.
So I guess, yes, you need to send it up to us where it's a contract so the town administrator can look at it. Plus also just get it up for legal opinion and the board can have copies of it for them to look at. And then we can move on from there, but it sounds like a good program.
Okay.
Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Have a good night. Thank you.
After that, I'm going to move on to Mr. Roberts, Highway Manager, Roberts Cove Road Rage Survey Bin. We've got the information in there that he wants to submit this out for Roberts Cove survey. I just have one comment, if we can get him on the line. No question I should. Roberts, you there, sir?
Yes.
So the request for full of the survey of Roberts Cove, the town never did a survey when they went in and redid that whole road over in the three phase before?
They did, but for some reason we cannot find survey number one. We have three, because it was done in three phases and that's the only survey I can't get my hands on. And we called the company, they don't have, and I don't know who the company was that did phase one. That's the one we're missing. I have phase two and three completely surveyed, but I can't find phase one.
Sounds like the solid waste center up there on top of Hur Hill, nobody even found the plans from the engineers some years ago.
Yeah, so the parts, uh, there's a couple of parts to this is having it resurveyed. One is that it will be coming back to the board that the culvert gets changed out at the bottom of the basin. It's going to end up as a box culvert, because we need to extend it and widen it, because it's too close to the edges of roadway. And that's done by an engineer and that's, that will be part of the survey when it's done. And the other thing is the drainage system that has to be installed coming down the hill past from Mr. Jaggers and then up over part of the hill all the way to the campground because of all the ledge. And where the water is sent now, uh, would be trapped underground and brought down to the basin culvert and then released there. So that's what we really need to look at and that will have to be engineered.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions with Mr. Roberts?
Kenny, do we use any of the engineers the town has on file?
It goes out to, it goes out to bid, Virgil? It has to go out to bid. That's what we've done in the past, anyway.
Gentlemen, any other questions with Mr. Roberts?
Just what is it in, in the, uh, survey one that is missing?
Survey one had, there, I have nothing. So the couple of parts to it, once the survey is completed, it gives all identifications of right of ways and, and of course, he's going to survey for the box culvert. When we put it out to engineering, the engineers are going to have to do borings and they're going to locate that ledge that comes down over that hill. And then the engineer will have to figure out how he's going to get a drainage system to come all the way down over that hill, all the way to the basin. We've got part of it right there at the beach, we, we did ourselves, but from the beach up in both directions is a, is a real question mark because of the ledge is so shallow, whether or not they hammer it out, they blast it out and create drainage coming down over that hill because there is absolutely none and there's no runoff. And they're putting all those brand new houses in. And then when you go up towards campground, they built all the houses on the left-hand side, which is the lake outs, lakeside, and they took the little camps and made them very big houses and they got all these drainage pipes directed at them. So it's been requested over the last several years to be able to catch all that water on that right-hand side and re-divert it down to the basin. So we're going to have to go through ledge there in order to bring it down. So that's another engineering feat.
Thank you. Other questions with Mr. Roberts? Motion to approve the request for full of the survey of Roberts Cove.
Thank you.
By Ruben Warner, to approve the request for full of Roberts Cove roads. Discussion. If you know discussion, I'll hold the board. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Both in the affirmative. Ken, if you can hang in there just a few minutes?
Yes, sir, I'll be here.
Number four, planning contracts of the town consulting engineering firms. Mr. McDonald, senior, our town planner.
Yes.
Representative. Guess I'll let you talk about it and answer any questions for me, feel free to ask.
These are three of the engineers that we use on planning for, um, subdivisions or roads going in and stuff. And these are the three that we pick, we put it out to bid and these are the three that we picked that are decent to work with and we haven't had a lot of problems with them. Yet they've done a good job for us, so.
You dealt with all of them before?
Yeah, what we do is, yeah, because like if there's a subdivision going in and, all right, KB gets it. And if there's another one going in, the next one gets it. We kind of share between them.
Jessica is on the phone, if you do have any questions for her, but I figured I'd let Mr. McDonald share his selectmen's report to me. Mr. Holt, you mentioned three engineering firms?
Yeah, yeah, usually we have, well, then we might only have two now. We used to have three and then we shorted. Because I know last year or the year before, we didn't get, a lot of, any engineers didn't bid on it and we ended up picking these two instead of the three.
So there's just going to be two? These are the same folks that they're using now?
We've been using these for a couple of years now. KB Partners and that's what I was.
But we do need two.
Yes.
Jessica, are you there on?
Yes, I, I am here.
Would you like to add anything that McDonald might have not added?
Um, no, I think he captured everything. KB Partners, um, did not go up on their rates, so they're the same as last year. And, uh, North Point Engineering, he only went up, um, a dollar on each item that he charges for. So we're pretty much in the same, um, you know, the, the same as we were last year.
Well, thank you. I figured Mr. McDonald, I hadn't been able to report on the planning work for a couple of months now. It made me feel good to give us a little speed.
There you go.
So I thank you for joining us tonight. Do you gentlemen have any other questions with Jessica or Mr. McDonald? I, I need a motion to approve that Mike Vanellope of KB Partners LLC and Kevin Leonard, P.E. of North Point to approve their contracts that's submitted by the recommendation of the planning board. Second?
Second.
Which was made by Mr. Rochelle to approve the contracts of the town, uh, for engineering for the town, recommended by the Alton Planning Board, Mikey Vigel, P.E. of KB Partners LLC and Kevin Larr, P.E. of North Point Engineering, seconded by Mr. McDonald. Any further discussion? I'll hold the board. Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Yes, both in the affirmative. Jessica, thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, you too.
Okay, gentlemen, we're going to move on to highway, old business. Number one, highway department, state bid for 10-wheeler truck and chassis. As you'll see, Mr. Roberts says put out specs. Roberts, you back with us, sir?
Yes, I am, sir.
All right. Gentlemen, at this time, I'm going to yield the floor to any one of you that would like to ask Mr. Roberts a question about the bid for the truck chassis.
Kenny, this, it says promotional package, government, so.
Yeah, what this is, it's just the same thing we did with the six-wheeler. This is actually the state contract. This is no other thing. This is not putting out the bid, the, they, state's already put it out the bid. Uh, you know, my suggestion to the, the board is to award the bid, uh, award it by state bid because it's already been put out and they have bigger buying power than us. And the price is, uh, the 122,000, flipping pages here. Yeah, and that's the actual state contract bid. So they've got, like I said before, and I've said it with the six-wheelers, they have more buying power than us. So they've already put it out. This is the state contract. It is a 2021. And if we can get this out or awarded to Liberty, they can actually order the truck and we can have it, that started on the chassis side. The second comment I would have, the existing 10-wheeler that I have here, since I have not taken delivery of the six-wheeler that's already on order that's supposed to, the chassis is due next month, I'd like to be able to trade the 10-wheeler in against that six-wheeler and see if I can reduce the cost of the six-wheeler that's about to come in for us, since we're keeping the existing six-wheeler to get us through winter. Did I confuse anybody?
No, sir. I'm, I'm right there with you. You haven't lost me yet. Mr. Holt?
Yeah.
We get that square, you want to trade the broken 10-wheeler in towards the new six-wheeler?
Yeah, I'd be able to take that deduction and get rid of that off our, off our roll, basically. And I had the owner here Friday, he's coming up with the, the trade-in, uh, actual cost. He went through the truck with, uh, the mechanic was here. They went through the truck, but I haven't got that in writing yet, exactly what they're going to give us for the whole thing. But if we can deduct it off the six-wheeler, we can take a serious look at what's left between purchasing the chassis, which is under state bid, and then see how much money is left and maybe we can, we can actually send out the, the rest of the bid to be able to bill it, build when the chassis comes in. And it probably not going to be of the sometime in January or February.
Another question, Ken. Said you were dealing with the owner?
The owner was here on Friday. I personally didn't. The owner was here on Friday, I personally didn't deal with him, Warren, the mechanic did.
Uh, one other question I had was, what's, that's two prices here?
On?
On the ten-wheeler, that you wanted to.
The purchase, the purchase of the chassis.
Yeah, the state bid price.
Yeah, it was one twenty-three something?
Yeah, yeah.
And then we're actually, the actual confirmed price for us is one twenty-two seven nine four. That's the actual confirmed price of the chassis.
And the state bids meet your bid specifications, I imagine?
Yes, yeah, yeah, there was a couple of minor changes, but the, Liberty is willing to do those.
Okay, yeah, I went over this line item by line item, uh, glad to see these specs when we go out to bid. Thank you for that, Kenny.
Yes, sir.
Well, you said after you get the new truck in, the one ton in, you felt you were gonna have a balance left, and how much last week, we were talking about this?
I think it was one eighty-eight was the number, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, which would be a hundred and twenty-two something for the chassis, and depending on what the trade-in would be for the ten-wheeler against the six-wheeler, there may be enough funds there to actually do a set of bid specs and actually award that bid, even though we're not gonna see this truck until, if I had to guess, March or April of next year.
But there's money in the account you feel left over that the one twenty-two will be covered, correct?
Yes.
That's, that's the only thing I want to be concerned about.
You gentlemen, any other questions? Mr. Roberts?
Just, part of that, Ruben, was, uh, we did the buildup because of the, there was supposed to be the excavator, uh, purchase next year, that's why it seems like there's extra money there, but now that we're gonna fix the excavator a different way, that kind of allows that money to float a little bit, and utilize a different way.
Kinda glad to see a little cushion in there, anyways, just in case we have an emergency such as this, so we can place something or get something ordered.
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, uh, any other questions to Mr. Roberts? Good job. Motion to approve one hundred and twenty-two thousand and ninety-four dollars for the purchase of a state bid truck. And incorrect.
Is that your motion?
Uh, that is my motion.
Thank you.
Which was made by Ruben Weber.
On a, and in the trade-in?
Discussion.
And in the trade-in to that motion?
Let's make that a separate motion, that's a totally separate vehicle going to another vehicle. Motion made by Ruben Weber to approve the one hundred and twenty-two thousand and ninety-four dollars state bid for truck and chassis as submitted to the board of selectmen, June twentieth, twenty, June twenty-second, twenty twenty, seconded by Virgil McDonald. Any discussion? Hold the board, Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Both in the affirmative. Gentlemen, now I entertain a motion to allow Mr. Roberts to use the ten-wheeler that we spoke about at last week's meeting, as the bad engine trouble, allow him, allow the trade-in value towards the new six-wheeler that's, old six-wheeler, so we can have this one of the plow, all.
Was a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
Thank you.
Motion made by Ruben. Second. Last of the discussion?
Uh, well, I'd like to have motions pending collector's approval with the price.
Trade-in value?
Trade-in value. All right, Mr. Roberts, I mean, well, at this point, I'm gonna table this and wait till Mr. Roberts has a price for us and comes back to next week's meeting. Does that sound accommodating to you, Mr. Roberts?
Yes, sir, not a problem.
Okay, this time, they will table the matter of the trade-in of the ten-wheeler towards the six-wheeler purchase. Okay. So at that point there, we'll move on to number two, old business, Mr. Roberts, if you wanna stay with us for a little bit, it has to do with Route 11C, Hugh Tree, DOT response. Look like you have a letter sent back to DOT, New Hampshire. Hampshire, Hampshire eleven Larrow Limited Access Highway does not extend to the edge of pavement, hold letter. Now Route 11D, a woven wire fence was affected to Larrow Line, highways that constructed in nineteen eighty-eight to seven. May the steel post remain visible in the slope today, as I observed them Friday morning, the attached highway construction shows the area between the fence and the eleven D pavement shaded green, this area known as the town right-of-way opposite Hillblades, approximately fifteen, fifteen feet to fifty foot wide, dirty of the trees that block the view, growing in this green band, while some are growing on the east side of Route 11C. Bill, we will have a crew address any new growth blocking the view within the New Hampshire eleven Larrow sometime in the summer, as resource schedules allow, New Hampshire DOT would not be responsible vegetation management in town right-of-way. Hope this clarifies the situation, please let me know if you have any questions, Roberts. Fortunately, gentlemen, as I haven't gone up and looked at it, maybe Mr. Roberts has.
No, actually, I haven't.
There's a, there's a whole lot of trees covering that canopy there.
I, I find it hard to believe that most of the, the structure is down in that green, green area.
Well, you have to think about it, a few years ago, New Hampshire Department, DOT had the prisoners' comp, they stripped that whole hill of all the wide vegetation. I know the steel wire offensive that's blocking up, I've seen that, unless we decide not to give Mr. Roberts a road reconstruction, I would wanna see it. Roberts, you have any input on this?
I have no problem taking down any trees that block, you know, block the view, I think it'd be, anything with our, our right-of-way, I'm happy to take down with authorization, you know, and open that back up. I really haven't taken a good look at it, um, I do understand what they're talking about, but it's something I can look at.
Well, look at it.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, it's possible, I haven't gone to look at it.
Come back and report to us, because it, some of them, most of them might not even be in our right-of-way.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, does he, does he have this map? If, if he doesn't, I'm sure the town administrator can get that door, he could have access to it from the state of New Hampshire.
Yeah, and there's actually, uh, there's actually a fence there.
Yes, sir?
Yeah.
A state of New Hampshire fence.
Yes.
Runs all along eleven D.
Runs a route along, runs, Route eleven, that's my property. Um, is that something you could look at over the next month, and maybe come back to us?
I can have it approved for the next meeting, sir.
All right, sir, I appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, gentlemen, nothing else on old business, only one. Oh, could you stay on the phone?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna start off tonight, gentlemen, instead of you. Uh, Mr. Robertson, I'd asked Liz earlier about the crosswalks, uh, and the paint, line painting throughout the bay in the town, I didn't know if you had an update maybe on us, you could tell us about the company we've contracted with, if they're able to do it.
Well, I've actually called him late today, and, uh, I couldn't get a hold of his scheduler, but I did talk to him, and unfortunately, he ended up kinda in the same situation as a lot of small businesses did, that a lot of the unemployed people that were unemployed during the beginning of COVID-19 didn't wanna come back to work.
Okay.
So it put him way behind, he, we are in the schedule, but he couldn't tell me when, I'll call tomorrow and talk to his secretary, April, and see if I can figure out where we're at.
My, my only concern is the new pavement we did over from the village store, where people become too accustomed thinking it's a double-wide parking lot, and a triple-wide, that we least get something in. Also, maybe when we do the no parking here, if it's possible, we can do, put no parking in on there, some, actually, crosswalk. But I, that's just my, that's my comment, I didn't know that's something you could look at for, for the board, the board requested, but I, I'm just concerned, because our biggest problem right now in the day, nobody wants to go on the crosswalks, they just wanna walk out, walk out of traffic, not pay attention, thinking the traffic's gonna stop, or I'm just afraid at some point, get hurt. The chief did say they will get their lines back up in the crosswalk.
Yes.
I guess that would be the end of it, and I would have to say about crosswalks, but I would ask the people in general, and also the public. Season is getting busier, we have more people in here than we normally have, so I'd ask the residents and the townspeople of town to have patience for our visitors and our tourists, but also ask our visitors and tourists to slow down, courteous to us and our community, watch out for our children, that's the crossroad. As Fourth of July comes upon us, that the folks that decide they ought to light up the Taj Mahal, that they think about the residents that live here and have to get up and work the next morning, for the lighting mob to one, to one. But in all, I'd like and welcome everybody to our town for their summer, but be courteous to one another, be respectful, that's all I have to say. Selectmen's report, I'll go to Mr. Smith.
Um, and one thing. Can we have Kenny close that or something? That was packed with people, and that is ungraded holes everywhere through there, and it was packed with people this weekend. Somebody falls in them holes, we could be sued out of Harmony Park, Harmony Park, where the ball was?
There were people using it.
It was marred, it's all dogged and holes and.
Well, if the board wishes, the board should close Harmony Park, no one should be using it, still under construction, nobody should let, don't assign it, that's what I'm saying, I wanted to mention.
I, I have to agree with you, uh, as a matter of fact, there was a few timbers that were, uh, leaning up against the roof, I, I put those down last week, walked around.
What's, what's the board's question? Board pleasure to ask Mr. Roberts to close Harmony Park. And tape it off.
I'd pleasure, or somebody could try it, you should.
Mr. Roberts, is that, is that something you could do for the board of selectmen?
Yeah, I think I have enough caution tape, what I'll do is I'll drive in signpost and put caution tape, wrap them, and put a, a line of caution tape all the way up through there, um, hopefully it will keep them out.
Yeah, 'cause there were a lot of people using it.
And I'll double, I'll double check, is it?
We don't have picnic tables, do we?
I think there is.
Can we remove, remove, remove the picnic tables as well?
I can, I'll remove those and bring them back to Parks and Recs, and, uh, also that, um, trying to think, closed for order, board of selectmen, I'm trying to think what else was on those signs that we put on the dock, we could probably utilize a couple of those and by putting them up as well.
Beautiful. The, uh, the picnic tables, I, I would recommend we bring them over to the other side, put them there, the, the new gazebo, we could probably use them over there for more people to sit on, and nice over, side of the grass.
I'll make sure they get moved, sir.
Thank you, I do appreciate it, and it's consistent, the board is agreeable with that?
Yes, also railing, metal railing that's still, that was taken off, it's still laying down, was that the whole railing that was laying down?
Hopefully timbers. Hopefully we can put the caution tape all the way around that, keep out.
Yeah, I'm just afraid somebody end up breaking their leg in that.
Mr. Eaton?
I was just gonna tell Ken.
Ken, this is Ryan, if you run out of caution tape, let me know tomorrow, 'cause I think I have more, I know we have, uh, a lot of tape in all of our cruisers.
Yes, sir.
I think I have some caution tape too, so I'll be happy to help you if you, if you need some more.
Okay, sounds good, we'll try to get it done first thing in the morning, so, we'll be there early.
That's the end of my report, I'll go to Mr. McDonald.
Uh, planning board, we did, significantly, no, Conley project up on Mikey Way, and the board might wanna look at the print, I can bring it in, there's a, two boat storage buildings, three retail offices, a gas station, and a boat, um, repair shop, they would like to put in. My suggestion is we, we might wanna look, because they've got an entrance on the Rand Hill too, and I think we should check that road to see if, you know, because it's a, it's a commercial site, and I think if they're gonna have an entrance on Rand Hill, that we should check the road, neither have it bonded or something, so we don't end up repairing the road. That's coming in for the.
Well, my question is, they're requesting, they're requesting, they're, they're gonna have to go to the highway department, request the driveway permit, correct? Because the planning board just can't grant driveway access.
It's already there, but Kenny will have to look at it, but there's a, uh, right-of-way already in there.
Four?
That, I don't know, just, so the right-of-way up on the print, they said they were gonna talk to that.
They could have been for a house line, commercial line.
They were eliminating the electric company right-of-way, the right-of-way for driveway out onto the back hill on Rand Hill.
So, well, I guess that's.
It's gonna be beautiful, it's gonna, I mean, they're doing the buildings, it's gonna fit the town structure with the people, I mean, that means.
Well, I guess that's, planning board, Bob, you're going to run with it, that's out of my jurisdiction. You have anything else, sir?
Nope, no, we're, we did.
Kenny, the old home link committee still has not met, planning to, first to meet, outside, uh, at the senior center, five-thirty, to discuss the possibility of an old home day, which would probably encompass the car show, and maybe a town barbecue in the center of town, maybe approach Profile Bank about that.
Love when you shut the road down, rub the traffic around us, and we, to the town like we used to, like in the middle of town.
I mean, that would be.
Parade permit, stand band on the front steps like we used to.
Yeah.
Have fun.
Yeah, well, that sounds good, Mr. Whitman, the chief had asked about that today at the emergency management meeting, so I would suggest on anything you come up, when the committee comes up, we can get it right into the emergency management.
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you.
As a matter of fact, as I understood it, any board or committee wanting to have a meeting was supposed to notify the emergency team, and I don't know whether Roger was doing that or not, uh, or said anything to you. He, he, I, I told him that it was available Tuesday night and Thursday night, and he said, well, we have to post it, so let's make it Thursday, so.
Is this the notification to the emergency management director?
I guess it is.
Emergency management director will get back to you, sir.
Roger will let you know after the meeting.
There you go.
Uh, just so you know, chief, there's, what, Bob, Roger, myself, and Leslie, and we have an under-member that's like five, publicly never shows up, so I don't think it would be a safety issue if we met, everybody brings their lawn chair.
You could get demonstrators.
Hmm?
You could get demonstrators.
Well, that's possible, I think, I think all are.
Anything else, Mr. Whitman?
I don't know, that's a.
Mr. Rochelle?
Uh, we just, we will be meeting for, uh, ZBA will be July ninth, uh, will be our next meeting, so nothing has changed with that. Um, as far as the, uh, water ban stand, we have not had a meeting, we are gonna have a meeting also in July, that we're thinking of, we'll let notify you that as to when we decide to, uh, to get a meeting in July, we'll do the same thing, we'll be outside, and, uh, just to go over things for August. Um, I have, haven't received the pictures yet for the public ramp in the bay next to Shively's, uh, I went to go pick them up, they weren't ready, said, they told me it would be this Thursday, so that, um, uh, we can discuss further the, the ramp going in. Ken did put the sign down there, hopefully that helps, to, to warn people exactly how far into the lake they can go before they can, that ramp had dropped off forty inches, so, um, that helps. In fact, I was happening to be down there last Friday for a while, helped a couple of people that backed in there with long trailers.
Three acts of trailer, Ryan, that went in there, hitched a record to it, he couldn't pull it up, they had to bring another record down.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just.
We've lost a couple of small SUVs. It's been a long time since I've seen a boat trailer car haul go down.
Yeah, someone did last week lose a boat down the ramp, they untied everything off, off the boat, backed down the hill, and the boat slid right off the trailer, onto the concrete, slid down into the water.
It was just a Sunday, I had no reviews.
That just happened, and he didn't check it out or anything, got on it, put a trailer away, and off they went. Um, last, if I can mention, the, you had asked me to take a look at the, uh, outside, um, fans for the, the air handlers, um, did look at it with John, they had time today for a few minutes this afternoon, did take a look at it, he wasn't aware of anyone discussing putting a roof on it, he had mentioned a long time ago, that no, can't have a roof, and, uh, we discussed that, and he, he was surprised that it even came up to us without going over his desk first, from Parks Recreation, he said, no, he said, I wouldn't approve a roof on that, anyway.
Something on the front to keep it out of sight, out of mind.
This is what we discussed, I, we had two suggestions, one, well, one of the sections, suggestions I made was cutting all the four-by-fours flush, get them all, they're all bananas anyway, they're all twisted, cut them all flush. He had mentioned a long time ago that no, we can't have a roof. And we discussed that and he was surprised that it even came up to us without going over his desk first from Parks Recreation. He said, no, he said, I wouldn't approve a roof on that anyway.
Something on the front to keep it out of sight, out of mind.
This is what we discussed, we had two suggestions. One, well, one of the suggestions I made was cutting all the four by fours flush. Get them all, they're all bananas anyway, they're all twisted, cut them all flush, go on the inside with fresh treated two by fours in between the pipes and put three quarter inch Vantec right on top, over the pipes, just to protect them from any ice or any snow coming down and that can be cleaned off. And it'll just protect the pipes from getting damaged. John is suggesting not to extend the deck at all, just go in the front, put three posts and put a fence. Put a fence and we can either do it in two ways, just a fence across sixteen foot would be two sections, or put lattice and vines and let it all grow up with vegetation. That's what his suggestion, leaving the two ends open for ventilation.
The problem I have with vines going up and vegetation going up, they work their way in eventually to the...
They have to be maintained, but...
Unfortunately, saying it has to be maintained, it need maintained to be two different things.
Right.
So I would suggest that we don't do anything unless it's small shrubbery that you put there that's not going to grow or something, just to blend in.
No. Well, that's what we're discussing, my, my thought was actually putting a six foot by eight foot sections of fence, it'd be two of them, three posts, that'd be sixteen feet long, the deck is eighteen feet with the posts, you're only going to be short a few inches on either side, but a foot. And then maybe shrubbery on each end and short shrubbery in the front of it. And then it could be, they have different colors, you either do it with wood or you do it with vinyl and they have, they have cedar color, they have brown, they have black, they have white, so whatever anybody's preference would be, or get a cedar fence and just stand it.
Does the day have to fix this one again? Because I see it leaking the other night at the planning board meeting.
Yes.
It was running right on the floor, pretty good shot.
Out three feet for ventilation.
Oh, it was, it was running out pretty good, the whole floor was soaked there and the bucket was almost full by the end of the meeting.
Did anyone report it to anyone?
They must have known. I did report it because I figured they must have known, the whole rug was soaked.
I don't know anything about it, but I'll look into it.
Thank you. Mr. Rochelle, you have the floor?
Basically, we discussed whatever way the board would like to price out, or price it out both ways, whatever you want to do. That is the suggestion from building inspector and myself for the, for the front.
I guess what we should do is pass it back down to the building inspector, have them do what, get it priced out?
Yep.
Just, just the whole. Did you say one little concern though? Talk about a solid fence.
Well, it'd be...
It's going to be three feet out.
Yep.
That's not going to affect...
No.
Okay.
Not at all, that's why I tell three feet.
Well, I understand that, still three feet.
What they were proposing before is to go all the way around it with lattice up against it, so this gives it all the air that's needed.
Yeah, yeah, as long as you get the air flow.
Okay. Just ask me a question about that? Would, would a brick facade on the fence work? The only reason I say that is consistent with the building. My batch might blend in a little bit better. I don't know, I've never utilized the product, I know they make it, but I've never used it. I used the black, the vinyl, vinyl brick, that stuff works and...
Yeah.
Depends how you attach it.
Well, that would... But I'm saying, you know what I'm saying, the folk brick where it's just a sliver of it, but it's real, you know, a solid material?
It actually gets a mortar or a caulking that looks like mortar in between all the joints.
I just figured I'd throw that out because I thought that aesthetically, if you connected it to the back of the, it almost would look like part of the...
Pinned it in.
Mm-hmm. It's just a thought. I, I wouldn't know how to do it, but I think I'd throw it out there.
But anything like that's entertained, you know, covering just the face of it, leaving the ends open for ventilation.
Yeah. Oh, I agree, I think it's, it's always, it was a necessity, but a nice one. But the building definitely needed an idea.
That's all I have.
So?
Yes, they had a Mill Coyle meeting on Tuesday. The guy mentioned a bus meeting, I could not make it, that's my day at the golf course. To keep, I worked there, I wasn't playing. The place don't open if I'm not there, so it's not a good deal. So, uh, I think it's all, but I did receive a draft of the minutes. Now, do you selectmen receive those?
No. Only you do. They come to our incoming box in the office, we do see them there.
Okay. Or should I have Barry possibly put them in a, in your file?
Well, I, I don't really need to see the minutes, that's why we have you as a representative, you see something within the minutes that you don't like, you have a concern about it, we bring it to the board to us.
But they're draft minutes, so, right? But they won't be finalized, so the next meeting.
Correct.
Next meeting is July, quote me, sixteenth.
Well, we can wait till the next minute, send you a ring back if you have a concern, just give us that report, so it's kind of what we all do. And my last one is, the bunch of committees still hasn't met, but I do see a proposal for, recommend the meeting, so we'll have to wait for emergency management team to give them the direction to go ahead. But thank you, if you say no, it won't hurt my feelings, so keep me out, keep me at home another night.
Speaking of which, chief, so now I've notified you about the old home link committee being Thursday, do you need to get back to Roger, the chairman, to let him know it's open?
Yeah, we're supposed to have something in writing, just an email or something, they were supposed to send something in in writing, just because, to be honest with you, to avoid problems from before where information got passed verbally that supposedly was not said, didn't said, and to eliminate all that, we said all meeting requests will just be in writing, you know, as to what the proposed dated, if it's an outside venue, it's not going to be a problem. But if somebody could send an email, or if you have Roger, send an email to, and I don't even mind emailing, I don't have his email, but if somebody can send one directly to me or Liz, just on the proposed date, and the only other thing that we've been recommending, especially for outside venues, is that you establish a rain date on your posting. Because it's an outside venue, the rain date would be, would be helpful for, you know, all the afternoon, so...
Just say the date and a rain date, that might be a bit tricky, but it might not be either. Okay. And she needs to do that right away if we're going to meet Thursday night.
I would suggest so, yes, sir. See you tomorrow, it's Tuesday, you only got the Wednesday morning to get it done. All right, folks, it's this time, then I'll stop the selectmen's report, move to the town administrator, Liz DeMare.
Thank you. The first item I have has to do with the June eighth non-public session minutes, you'll see a document at your seat, upper right corner, it says minutes.
I do, well, no, this is your report, ma'am, so I've enough reading for the night, so I'm going to let you read.
So it's a memo to the board of selectmen from myself, and it reads, "An error was made in sealing the June eighth minutes and it needs to be corrected. Our R C ninety-one dash eight colon three requires a reason to seal non-public minutes. The June eighth minutes were approved and sealed on June fifteenth without picking a reason for sealing. Normally I take care of this for you when I do the minutes. If you recall, once out of non-public on June eighth, the audio was lost and the meeting had to adjourn. The motion to seal that you made could not be included in the minutes because the live audio had been lost and there was no other way the public could listen or attend the meeting. Everything that happened after exiting non-public had to be removed from the minutes because those actions would have created an illegal meeting. Moving forward, your motion to seal will need to have one or more of the following included in it, and I would be happy to make a recommendation each time for you. A, affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of this board. B, render a proposed action ineffective. C, pertains to preparation or carrying out of actions regarding terrorism. The sealing of the June eighth non-public minutes can be fixed with the following motions. The first one is, I move to rescind the motion to seal the June eighth twenty twenty non-public minutes. The second motion is, I move to not divulge the June eighth twenty twenty non-public minutes because divulgation of the information likely would affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of this board and render the proposed action ineffective. So I'm asking the board tonight to make these two motions on the bottom in order to fix the June eighth non-public session minutes."
So it's okay to ruin our reputation, but nobody else's?
The government, the state government has changed the rules and the laws pertaining to non-public.
Yeah, I know.
So it's got, it's got more and more complicated, it was nothing that the selectmen were aware of. This happened, it happened, it was an honest mistake by the board. For this time, I'm going to interrupt the town administrator and ask for a motion to, I move to rescind the motion, move to rescind the motion to seal the June eighth twenty twenty non-public.
Second.
Motion made by Ruben Warmer, and second by Groger McDonald, in discussion. Hold the board, Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Motion is affirmative. Second, I move to not divulge the June twenty eight twenty twenty public, non-public minutes because the divulgence of the information would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of this board and render the proposed actions ineffective.
Second.
Motion made by Ruben Warmer, second by Groger McDonald, in discussion. Hold the board, Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman, yes. Vote is in the affirmative.
Thank you.
All right, ma'am, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. The next item has to do with the three seasonal water accounts where the owners have asked for a legal, you asked for a legal opinion from the town attorney and he provided it this morning, you have it at your seat.
He takes, reference to that, he takes out several paragraphs within the waterworks rules stating that why we should not have to prorate any water. Because it is basically seasonal water line, it is a flat rate, not a month charge or anything, even though April to October is mentioned in there, it also says approximately for opening up, it's a timeframe for opening up the seasonal lines. So I still stand by my feeling that we should not prorate.
Yeah, I agree.
The only thing is, in essence, to make it a little easier on the water department because they have to make calls on this, that we have a, the town administrator send down to the water superintendent, the paragraphs that are highlighted here from the town attorney stating this is why the board of selectmen are not doing a prorate. If they have any questions other than that, that they need to call the board of selectmen or send in more correspondence, but as far as I'm concerned, I will not, I won't stand up this issue. Do you gentlemen agree with that?
Yes.
So...
The consensus that you just did is fine. I am wondering about one particular person of the three who is dying of cancer and has not turned on the water this year and will not be turning on the water this year. I spoke to Ruben about it before the meeting, he's trying to prepare his state for his sons. I asked, I mentioned it to Ruben, he, this is a sad subject, but he mentioned years ago the water commission in a very similar situation did waive a particular bill. And I don't know if you want to speak to that Ruben or not, but I'm asking them...
When you're done.
So he doesn't have the water turned on, so he's not using it.
That is, it's a seasonal property.
Minimum.
He has not...
If he hasn't turned his water on yet and he's not using it, then we shouldn't be billing him anyways.
You remember two years ago, we had a similar situation at Christian Conference Center, property had been in a probate for over two years, nobody could use the property, they kept getting the bills and bills, now that probate was over, they wanted to sell the property, but yet the lien was hanging over the sale of the property and the water commission and myself and you were included. We did a bait down because no one had used it.
I'm just putting it out there for your consideration, for this one particular bill, this one particular time.
As we can do it without getting in trouble.
But it'd be a favor. To me, if he's not using the water and it's not turned on at that camp yet, I mean, then we shouldn't be billing him until it gets turned on.
And you're absolutely right, but the problem is some of these seasonal water facilities, you don't know if they're using it or not, because most of them don't cause it to turn on, they just go and turn the valve and it's on. I don't know where the property is located, but if there could be verification of what is being said tonight to the town administrator, I would have a problem maybe if someone doesn't use the water, they're not going to be there all season, if they come up once, they get charged for the whole season.
That's right.
I have a problem with that. So I'll have the town administrator look into this, or he can get back to us again. Sound good?
Yep, thank you very much.
That all right with you, Monica?
The next item has to do with the emergency management team and a quote for the town hall library waterworks for protective barrier hardware installation, and if it's all right with the board, I'd like to turn this over to the emergency management director.
I'm always ready to talk. So what you're looking at is a quote from Granite State Glass, we've been waiting for this quote to come back in. So just adding to what Liz had to say, this quote also includes, the big bulk of this price is actually the clerk's. The clerk tax collector, that big window, we're going to be putting a permanent clear tempered glass in that's going to be put in a bronze door channel. This includes all of the glass, the hardware to install it, and most importantly, the labor to install it. So this is all going to be done through a contract. We are, as you heard earlier when we were talking, we are making preparations for temporary, you know, items to be put in place by July first because we just don't think all of this work is going to be done by July first. But the intent is, we need a permanent solution for that large area, especially in the clerk's office. You know, this isn't an issue that's going to go away soon, and it's always an issue that we should have some sort of separation between employees and the public to some degree for protection. I mean, if we're worried about saliva and particles, people are entirely too close together at that point in time, but there's no way to avoid that when you're interacting face to face at those windows, so. This is a permanent solution and, you know, given the fact that we are going to make permanent alterations to that area, felt it needed to come to the board and the board needed to approve it based on the fact that it's going to be a permanent alteration and not so much the actual dollar amount. Because dollar amounts below the bid requirements and things of that nature, but like I said, permanent alterations, board needs to be...
Emergency management?
Yes.
Remember, as the chief said, the next one he's going to refer to, you remember the town of Alton has already been approved for a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, you don't make that mention the next one. So this is what the board had asked for, requested, this is what the emergency management team came up with. I told them tonight that I would come in with my full recommendation that we approve this as a... If anybody else has any questions to the chief, go ahead and step up. Mr. Holt? He did say he just qualifies for re...
So what I'm going to say, and I, I'd like to just put this out there because it's going to cover both and what we're talking about, so the town of Alton was, is qualified for a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, air marked, that's through the CARES Act. Above and beyond that, the, the town would qualify under FEMA for only protective, they call it, it's a subcategory called protective measures. Under those protective measures is PPE, supplies, but also supplies needed for, this is considered PPE anyways because of the barrier shields, but it's also for any of these supplies for reopening, protective measures will qualify. Now, those are qualifying items. I will say a hundred percent, I cannot sit here and say, we are guaranteed that money. The comfort of knowing Alton is air marked to a hundred and twenty-six thousand, these items have been put out as items that will be covered, but until we have an approval through one or the other and then money is released, I, I, all I can do is my part on submitting all of this, but this is a qualifying factor.
That hundred and twenty-six thousand, that's payroll toll, the first responders and everything, right?
No. Then the first responder stipend comes out, it's still out of the CARES Act, but it's not out of our allocated one twenty-six. That's above and beyond being paid out of that account.
I had originally thought it was...
That's why I'm asking, discussing... That's why I'm asking, discussing.
And once, to Liz's defense, it was unclear to begin with, there was a clarification put back.
Gentlemen, any other questions for the chief on this?
I just wanted to clarify, in case anybody was wondering, this was also a price, which is very good price, but the water department, the library and town hall, so it's three locations, just clarifying that.
What about, what about the parks and rec building?
Parks and Rec, it does have a windshield in front of it, and you first watch it, makes it last. The police department does too, they don't let you pass the first three.
They're hard to bullet.
I went down, to be honest with you, I went.
You know, they just, they got that unlimited budget down there, they just keep you as long as a check, so there they write.
Gentlemen, do I have a motion to approve the amount of $2,140 for implementation of PPE within the town hall library and all of them? I move. Second. Motion made by Mr. Rochelle, second by Mr. Whitman. Any further discussion? Hold the board, Mr. Whitman. Yes. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman, yes, vote affirmative. So chief, I guess you're up next on the next one, too.
Mahoney, I guess I'd like to turn this over to the chief.
So, okay, like I said, so what you're looking at here, there's another quote for Mahoney's Plumbing and Heating, this is for the east side restrooms, and this is to do all of the touchless, automatic flush, the toilets, the urinals and the hand free sensors in the sinks. Now, this one's for 4,885. You know, we discussed this today, this is under the 5,000 mark, but, under the board of west side restrooms, and we felt we needed to discuss this as well.
Okay, this is a lot of money for five, five units. And granted, they're coal, which is top of the line, but for five units, that's a lot of money.
Five units, are you talking about five?
The prices, I'm not talking about Mahoney, I'm talking about the prices of those types of touchless visual electronic systems.
My understanding, and I'm no plumber, but my understanding is there is a lot of, there's more to it than just the installation of the, that they have to redirect the plumbing because it has to be a straight flow, is my understanding of it? That the turns and the bends, all that has to be eliminated, so there is, there is extended labor with that. So again, what I want to point out, and you know, I didn't have the benefit of being here when you had the last discussion, but this goes for all of this stuff, talking about the money that's allocated for the town and FEMA, we're talking about personal protective measures. So, right now, we're paying for chemical toilets, you know, portable toilets to be out there for the long term. Now, what's going to end up happening is, is we're going to end up keeping these portable toilets for the entire duration of the summer. All that expense is going to be covered because they've already said that temporary measures and protective measures for the public or for their employees will be covered in those funds. The other aspect of this, of looking at this, is this is a permanent solution for the future moving forward. We have no idea how long that we could be in this situation, meaning, not necessarily everything closed, but the fact that we're concerned about touch transfer or community transfer of this, of this disease, because there's a lot of talk of spot spar cuts, you know, where it, well, we've heard about it already in the news, you've got, Florida is the big one that pops in my mind, as soon as they opened their nightclub line, they had a massive surge, almost 1,200 positive cases in less than 24 hours. It was a ridiculous amount of time. And what happened was, that was all in a public environment and it was all transferred through community touch. We have these bathhouses that are not just, we're not talking about employee base, we're talking about completely there to service the public. We have no idea the volume of traffic going in there, all we know is what we see when we're out there, but we don't actually get a count on it, but I can tell you that it's thousands of people in a weekend, I think we all know that, safely. This is a permanent solution moving forward, and it doesn't matter how long the duration is, but it's also something that qualifies under these expenses, we're not going to get this money again for the same reason. And the more that we open up now, the more the economy opens up, these funding sources are going to dry out, there's not going to be any more out there. So, that's why we felt strongly about pursuing this direction instead of a temporary solution, to sort of take advantage of that, and not in a bad way, but in a way of improving the town for the future. We had this discussion today, we talked about, you know, you look at any facility, rest area or anything of that nature, they already have this technology, this touchless, everything is, in that gear, long before the pandemic happened, that was the push of the, I mean, John mentioned a great, a good point today with the ADA compliance, the fact that, you know, some disabilities prevent them from being able to turn knobs and things of that nature, so this becomes a step further in meeting that conformity as well. So, our recommendation would be that we pursue this, at least to the point where, we understand that money is climbing up now, we've done the two public restroom, these are the big public areas that service the public. I mean, there is a thought of moving forward in some of our employee restrooms and things of that nature have that, but this was the primary concern right now, to get these public restrooms taken care of.
Do we have any idea what it's costing us weekly for the spot of pot that we've got now?
I think we're upwards of, or I think we're upwards of $600 a month now, because I believe it's $100 a unit. And we're.
The porta potties are 110 each, and the handicap porta potties are 145 each per month, and the additional cleaning per week for each unit is an additional 15 or 20 dollars.
So, I think he's only worn up over 1,300 dollars a month now, because we have, we have six on the west side, didn't we just put two on the east side too?
I thought it was four on the east side. Was it only two?
Well, it was supposed to be four on the east side, originally what you talked about, because you have so many people over there on the beach at any given time.
And I think they must have put a handicap over there as well, just like they did the others, so you got the added cost of that, so we definitely have over 1,300, if not 1,500 bucks a month now. So you figure, we're going to have to maintain that at least for another two to three months, that takes care of this cost altogether, at that point, when you're looking at those numbers.
And true, as businesses may, I have been asking what the public restroom is going to be. Just because the spell after the long hot weekend, even from that side, the public restrooms are working their way down in both directions.
Now, why didn't we add the west side in?
West side, west side are even being.
Yeah, west side was approved, they've already installed it, actually, I believe they're working on it currently right now. That's the other thing, is Mahoney's was able to provide these services immediately, which, you know, with a lot of the trade right now, getting them, getting availability is very difficult.
Second, makes sense, it's my thing, it's my move, thank you.
Gentlemen, do I have a motion to approve that?
To the tune of $4,885.
Motion made by Phil Whitman to approve $4,885 to the east side public restroom for electronic flush valves and urinals and two hand free sense operated faucets for labs, second by Paul Rochelle, any further discussion?
One question.
Mr. Holt. Maybe I missed it.
After these porta potties fall, east side, west side, are they going to be opened up?
Yes, that's the plan, is to remove the porta potties and open up the public restrooms again.
Got the cleaning issue straightened out?
Yes, I mean, as we're moving back, the work schedules are going to, you know, come back to normal duration, it won't be so sporadic, so we'll be able to service it. Providing, and my understanding is, is it's, we're having an easier time getting supplies now, because the other issue, mind you, when we first started, wasn't just the cleaning supplies, but also the toilet paper and paper products, it's a little easier now. And because it's non-such demand, we won't have risk people stealing it too, hopefully, fingers crossed.
Well, we're going to put automated machines at 25 cents, as you know. The motion is made, second, any other further discussion? I'll pull the board. Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman, yes, boy, that went so much easier this week. Vote affirmative. All right. Administrator, you're still up?
I have nothing further in open session.
Don't say.
Boy, the list is getting shorter and shorter.
Now she wants to push these, I told her earlier today, quick evening, we're down around here. Gentlemen, when you have the consent agenda in front of you, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
June 22, 2020.
Made by Mr. Holt, to approve the consent agenda submitted on June 22, 2020. Second by who?
Second.
Mr. Rochelle, any further discussion on the consent agenda? Being, hold the board, Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Yes, vote affirmative. Okay, gentlemen, at this time here, we have no discretionary action requests for appointments, we do have a non-public session. And the RSA 91 dash A colon 3, paragraph 2B. Take a motion to approve that? Don't move, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for going up to non-public session. 91 dash A colon 3, paragraph 2B, do I have a second?
Second.
I'll pull the board then, Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman, yes. We are a non-public session at this point, vote with any affirmative, I am actually going to have a request to five minute recess, if the chief doesn't mind, administrator doesn't mind, and if the board doesn't mind. And if the board doesn't mind.
All right, folks, we're back in public session.
We're going to vote. Because we're hiring an individual, a whole lot of money, so we have to...
Right, but do you want to wait until the person...
Actually agrees to get the position?
Right.
I'm not going to...
And then...
I'm going to offer... I'm going to make a motion, offer a police sheet. To hire a police officer, an RSO officer. That would...
Yes.
Because we're stealing something, we're going to reopen it right after that vote. Right? Because we're going to put out everything that was discussed. She has a... she has a petition. She knows this. Okay, so... All right, folks, after a little discussion there, back and forth between me and the town administrator. Back to the finish line. Because the non-public minutes will show what we talked about.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the police sheet to hire our new RSO officer at $28.25 per hour with a 12-month probation period.
Should name the officer.
No, sir. Not until they can't...
No.
Until the officer accepts the position.
Right, second. Okay.
Motion's made, the second by Mr. Rochelle. Any discussion? Only... my discussion is only is I'm not mentioning the individual's name right now. It's a conditional offer that we're offering. If the individual accepts the offer, then we will be told by the police sheet they have conditional offers offered. Prove the conditional offer, then the name will be released at that point. Any further discussion? I believe I'm legal in doing that, don't I? Am I correct, ma'am?
The name will be released in 72 hours when the non-public session minutes are completed.
Okay.
Unless we seal them.
Unless you seal them.
Chief, I'll give you enough time, correct, please?
Well, do you want to seal the minutes till next week?
That's up...
At this... at this point, no, because we've already made the motion, I have the individual.
I'm comfortable. I mean...
I feel very comfortable. Motion's made, the second, and further... any further discussion? All those in favor, I'll hold the board. Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth, yes, votes in the affirmative. At this point, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
One more question, the town administrator. Can we find out what we spent $1,353 on 622 on the town beach restoration project down there? For how many packs and stuff?
What's that? That was the, um, the... who's the vendor?
Doesn't say the vendor.
That, I believe, was the one that you all had a discussion about at the last meeting.
The paper.
For informational purposes. Yeah.
Yes.
The GMI, it was the GMI change order.
GMI change order.
Yes, that's what that was. That's right. I recognize the amounts.
They haven't even been back here to work on it or do anything, and we've already given them $1,353? They haven't even been here yet. So they write a change order, and we write them a check already?
I... I can't speak to that, you know.
Just pull that... While your cash register...
You should get the information through the next meeting. You would be so kind.
Yeah. I'll leave that for... okay.
All right, gentlemen, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:29.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Don't worry, I won't drag this out. Are we figuring that we're going to continue with our weekly meetings while we're in the pandemic?
Yes, sir. I feel we should, because they're moving along fine. We're out of here within two to two and a half hours. It's better than sitting here till 9:30, 10 o'clock at night every two weeks.
Okay.
I think it works easier for the employees if that's all right with the board.
That's fine with me.
Liz?
It's still being swatted on the wall.
Virgil?
Okay.
Motion's made. Do I have a second? My chairman at 8:30. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll hold the board. Mr. Holt. Yes, Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth, yes, votes in affirmative. Thank you all to our employees for staying out with us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.